There you go. Okay, we have a presentation to make prior to starting our meeting. I'm happy to introduce the five and six-year-old Wes Walton All-Stars. They won their district, they won state, and they went to New Orleans and won the World Series. So I think that is great. And I believe Director of the Parks and Rec has some statements to make on it.
Thank you Chairman, and you are right, they did win all those games, but I want to let you know how they won those games. Not only did they obviously play great defense, but this age group, the rule is, you can only score seven runs per inning. And so I'm going to throw these numbers out there, and it's still going to show you how much they dominated. They scored 251 runs in those games and only gave up 72. They had a 14-0 record in those three tournaments. They beat teams from Texas, Louisiana, and all the teams from Georgia. They had a 13-run differential, which means they averaged beating their teams by more than 13 runs, which is incredible. So again, they not only won the World Series, they dominated in every game they played. So congratulations to those guys. I do want to introduce the staff that runs that, Brendan Craig, I think is one of our coordinators at Wes Walton, and Jane Biko are both here. So guys, y'all did a good job of organizing our league this year. And Jeremy Bauer, head coach, come on up, please. Yeah, you'll need to. Let everybody hear you. Congratulations.
Thank you. Let me just say to the entire room, this was an incredible group of boys. I want to say thank you to the coaching staff. Let me just go ahead and point who that out is. Jeremy Fuller here, Tex Lee, Wes Sorrels, Grant Carter, and Paul Nichols. So you can be a talented group of boys, and this group was probably by far the most talented group of boys I've ever coached. I've been coaching for about six or seven years in the rec department, and hands down, this team from top to bottom is the most talented group I've ever seen come out of rec at this age. But it could not be done without a coaching staff. So these other five gentlemen were incredible in developing these kids, not only on the field, but also off the field. But this team in general, it was an incredible group of kids. They, I want to be humble, but they did dominate people. It was really, really, almost, I think it was jaw-dropping as coaches and parents to be able to sort of see what they were able to accomplish on the field. And so there's a lot of big things for these boys going forward in their athletic careers, baseball, football, whatever it is, but we're very, very proud of them. I also want to say that obviously we played in a lot of different games, you know, with substate, state, and also in the World Series. And we represented Walton County. And I want to say that this group of boys, this group of coaches, the families that you see with Walton County shirts around and hats and stuff like that, they handled theirselves to the best ability they could ever do to represent Walton County. We had people coming up to us saying, "What a great coaching staff, what a great group of families, what a group of boys." So we didn't just win on the field, we went off the field as how we conducted baseball coaching and also our families. So you guys should be very proud of how Walton County was represented in the World Series this year. That being said, I want to say thank you guys to Walton County for all that you guys do to provide rec department and to provide athletics to these boys and the girls that are in Walton County. I know that, you know, a lot of places don't have that, but we have a tremendous amount of boys who are looking to play baseball, girls looking to play softball, footballs, all the other sports that come in Walton County. A lot of great parents that donate their time and their energy to be able to do that as well. So thank you guys for all that you do to be able to support Walton County, the rec departments. I specifically want to say thank you to Jane Biko and Brendan Craig. I know Brendan in particular is probably tired of me stopping in his office on a daily basis for those three or four weeks that we practice, but they've been over backwards making things happen to get our team ready for practice fields. Jane was phenomenal in helping us with fundraising. I think we raised almost $15,000 to help provide the cost with some of these families to go to, be able to go to New Orleans. So I just want to say thank you guys for all that you do for us. Thank you, Wes Walton Rec Department. And let's just give a round of applause for these boys.
Let's do a standing applause.
Yeah. We'll introduce the boys as well, I think we want to introduce the boys. If you guys will just tip your hat when I call your name, okay? Brody Fuller, Carter Daniels, Hampton Schumacher, Hudson Sorrels, Jason Nichols, Max Bauer, Julian Siaka, Brooks Carter, Hay Sorrels, Cohen Davis, Owen Burt, and TJ Davis.
Want to take a picture with me?
Yes, go ahead and take a picture. He did make a bow, thank you. Yes, Mark's on the phone.
Mark, we're taking a picture, Brian. You're going to look good for it.
Looking good, Mark.
Tell us what the thing is, he's a little smile. And on that note, we'd like to present the Wes Walton Rec Department with the World Series championship trophy to Jane Biko and Brendan Craig.
Good job, fellas. Thank you all. Okay, we're going to allow the team to exit, and then we'll do the pledge of allegiance to the flag and have an invocation. So we'll wait a few minutes, let the kids get out of the way.
No doubt, you should be proud. Awesome.
Commissioner Banks, are you still with us?
Yes.
Okay, would everyone please stand, let's say the pledge of allegiance, followed by the. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Father, thank you for this wonderful day, and thank you so much for these young kids and their parents that come before us tonight. Please watch over them and help them all to be great leaders of the community one day. Please watch over us tonight as we make decisions that impact the county, help us to make the best one. Thank you so much. Keep us all safe, in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Okay, I'm going to call the board meeting to order, and let the record show that all are present, Mark Banks is participating via phone call in. And before we adopt the agenda, I would like to make a statement. As of Friday, we had 11 people signed up for public comment. Today we have 13, and allowing three minutes per person, and sometimes that's restricted, not getting everything out. I chose to move the public comment to the end of the meeting, and we're going to waive the three-minute limit so that we can hear everyone out and not be limited to three minutes. But we do need to take care of the county business first, and then we'll state a midnight if we have to, to listen to the public comment. With that being said, I would like a motion to adopt the agenda.
So move.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question. Can we move the 6.212, off the administrative consent agenda, and discuss it separately?
Yes, sir.
Can we do it at the end, after the public comment? I know it's late.
Counsel, you see him? All right, you proposing to add it after public comment?
Yes. 6.12, on the administrative consent agenda.
That's fine with me. Any other changes on the agenda? All right, with that changed, entertain a motion that we adopt the agenda.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Adams, second by Commissioner Bradford. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Care is unanimous. We'll move right into the planning and zoning recommendations.
Commissioner Banks, did you vote?
Yes. I voted yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, Sharona.
Yes, sir. All right, the first case is approval of conditional use 21050003 for summer day camp on 4.13 and 2.43 acres. The applicant and owners are Kevin and Shelley Shellnut. The property is located at 5889 Center Hill Church Road and on 336 Brook Hollow Lane. This is in District Two. Basically, the applicant is seeking a conditional use to run a day camp. There was no opposition at the planning commission, there was over 100 people in support. The planning commission did recommend approval of the conditional use with allowing the camp to run 20 days in the summer and 10 days in the fall.
Okay. Is the applicant here to state? Please come forward, I'll open the public hearing, and please come forward and state your name and what we're doing, please.
I'm Shelley Shellnut, and I'm requesting a conditional use permit for our property at 5889 Center Hill Church Road and 336 Brook Hollow Lane.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Thank you very much. Is there anyone here opposing this request? Please come forward and state your opposition. State your name and address, and then your opposition, please.
Good evening. My name is Carl Kimmel, homeowner of 3607 Shepherd's Lane. My property borders both lots of the Country Kids Day Camp. As a resident of Loganville, I have much in common with the Country Kids camp and understand the importance of the kids playing outside and having less screen time. Letting the kids play was never the issue. We were surprised to receive a letter from the Office of Planning and Development making us aware that CKC was seeking the proper permits to order to open a camp. This didn't make sense, since the camp has been open for over 10 years. We had always assumed goodwill and never questioned whether the camp was properly licensed and permitted for camp use. This concerning to us as a property flanks 5889 Center Hill Church Road and 336 Brook Hollow Lane. I was going to be out of town for the meeting on June 3rd, so I wrote a letter including our concerns, none of which were addressed, and no postponement was given, even though we were only given a short notice of that meeting. Our concerns. Noise level. Of course, a camp of 125-plus children and staff creates noise, and yes, it is heard by the homes around. Camp vehicles such as four-wheelers, starting as early as 8:00 a.m., kids playing is a wonderful sound, but 125-plus kids all day, four-wheelers, megaphones, et cetera, grows old after a while. Noise, in fact, negatively affects property value. Camps are great, but not when it's in your backyard. Liability. In the past, kids have wandered up the creek further onto my property. This affects us as if a child is injured on our side of the creek or happens to wander further onto my property. There is no fencing along the camp property line, and our property, does CKC have liability insurance that covers children if they get injured on my property? 336 Brook Hollow Lane. This property has been used as part of the camp for many years, yet left off the original application. This property runs along the entire back of my property. This increases the noise substantially. If they do not have liability insurance, does it cover this additional lot? How can a fully residential lot be granted conditional use for a camp use? This lot allows CKC to grow larger, further affecting property value. Frequency of camp. The application stated 15 days only of camp. One of our concerns is that additional days of camp are run by Kayla Shellnut, which was not included. Can additional days be added in the future? Traffic. Yes, CKC has an officer outside of their camp for traffic. This camp season, a new traffic issue has been created by the strict pickup times. CKC is very clear that cars should not line up on Center Hill Church Road prior to 2:45 and 4:45. This has caused a few cars to end up in parking in Shepherd's Field subdivision, waiting for that exact pickup time, causing increased traffic in our neighborhood. The creek. At the point where my property, 336 Brook Hollow Lane and 5889 Center Hill Church Road meet, the camp uses the creek as a large part of their activity throughout the day. As part of the plot plan, the center of the creek is the property line of our properties. Swings, slides, concrete stairs were built by CKC for further, for the kids to play in the water. I am sure this is a wonderful for the kids, but creates the insurance and liability issues for us. Basically, by allowing the kids to play in the creek, the camp is using my property as part of their camp. Before moving forward with granting a conditional use permit, we are asking for the issues of noise, traffic, and liability and use of the creek to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, any questions from the board? I have one. How long have you lived at your property?
October 2006.
October 2006. Was the camp there when you bought your property there?
I'm not sure.
All right, thank you. Does the owners want to rebut? Any other questions, though? Okay, allow rebuttal.
This is the first time I've really done this, so I wasn't sure what I ought to say. Camp has happened for over a decade in Walton County, and it has been a refuge to many children in our county. Camp provides children with many outdoor experiences, such as swimming, archery, PE, gemining, team building, a mud pit, and much more. As an educator here in Walton County for over 25 years, I know firsthand the effects that screen time has. Camp teaches social skills and sensory skills, and those are two areas that develop when they get to explore and interact with other children. Camp teaches motor skills, they learn to meet new friends, resiliency, teamwork, lifelong skills that positively impact our future for right here in Walton County. Our staff at camp consists of an ICU pediatric nurse, five lifeguards, certified teachers, college students, and high school students. Many of our campers long for the day when they too can be camp staff. Our camper-staff ratio is four to one. We pride ourselves in safety, integrity, and good old-fashioned fun. Our insurance is a commercial insurance policy that covers every child and staff member per head for every activity and event that we do. In addition to insurance, 80% of our staff is first aid, CPR, and fire safety certified. Our equipment is checked daily, our water's been tested, the fire marshal's been out, our staff have been trained. Our nurse is a certified pediatric nurse, advanced in life support certification and BLS certification. Camp is open to all children regardless of socioeconomic status, chronic health condition, or special need, and what a relief that is to the families in our community to be able to drop their child off and know that they are taken care of regardless of their condition. Campers and staff come year after year to enjoy the freedoms of just being a kid without the pressures of today's digital world. Camp is much more than just a summer camp, it teaches our children what it means to be a good Samaritan, and our Dunk for a Dollar program is one way that we teach campers how to give back. Campers bring a dollar to dunk a friend or a staff member, and all proceeds go to a medically fragile child in Walton County. We've raised over $20,000 for children in our county, and this year we raised $7,500 for Hudson Fortner, who has a medically fragile condition. Being a 501(c)(3), we're able to support our community throughout the year during times of tragedy, hardships, and loss. We are often called on from the schools to help throughout the year when a child needs additional clothes, school supplies, or a home burns down. Camp is more than just swings and slip and slides, you see. Camp is a positive support system for our community. In 2010, I founded Country Kids Christmas Roundup. The Roundup is a program that provides Christmas gifts to nearly 900 Walton County children each year. With my support from my CK friends and family, we have sponsored over 8,000 children so far. Everything we do at camp is in hopes of bettering our community. My property is a special place to me, and I want it so badly to share it with others. I'm asking that you consider this permit. Never have my children crossed the line. The pins are fully marked. We are trying to teach our children to be a generation that will always value playing in the dirt and giving back to their community. I'm asking for 20 days in the summer and 10 days in the fall. Thank you for your consideration.
All right, thank you. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing on this issue and ask the board to make a decision, make a motion.
Mr. Chairman. Is Mark on the phone?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend that we follow the planning zone's recommendation and grant the approval of the conditional use.
Okay, Commissioner Banks has made a motion to accept the recommendations of the planning commission and grant.
I'd like to second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Warren has seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? I call a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes unanimously. Commissioner Banks, do you want to make a statement?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say thank you to Mr. Michelle for all the work they do with this camp, as all the families they've helped over the years, they are an asset to our community, and I'm proud to have them in Wes Walton and call them a neighbor. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Banks. All right, we'll move on to item 4.2.
Okay, 4.2 is approval with conditions CU 21050017 for a telecommunications tower of 19.86 acres. The applicant is Verizon Wireless, the owner is Geiger Farms LLC. The property is located at 3670 Anglin Road, this is in District Three. The application is for a 195-foot telecommunications tower. There was no opposition at the planning commission. The planning commission recommended approval, as recommended by Public Works, that the site provide a commercial driveway apron.
Okay. Is the applicant here to represent? I will open the public hearing. Please state your name and...
My name is Lloyd McCarthy, I'm with Tower Engineering Professionals in Raleigh, North Carolina. My address is 326 Tryon Road, Raleigh, North Carolina 27603.
Thank you.
Commissioners, I have looked at the recommendations of the planning commission, and I'm quite sure that the recommendation is supported by a very thorough review by staff, and so we respectfully request that you accept the recommendations of your staff and the planning commission and approve this proposal. The site is necessary to fill a critical gap in Verizon's network. It will bring social and economic benefits associated with the telecommunications system. We have worked, searched for existing structures, looked at existing towers within the area for over two years. The site, we consider it to be the most appropriate location. It is in the A1 Rural Estate District of the county, it is on a large property, almost 20 acres, it is sufficiently, it will meet all the setback requirements of your code, which is, I think, Article 6, Part 2, Section 100 to 200. And we have examined every aspect of the code, related regulations, the telecommunications act, and Verizon certainly will comply.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of the applicant from the board? All right, is anyone here in opposition to this cell tower? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and ask the board how they would like to vote on this recommendation.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions set by planning zone.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Shellnut.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Bradford. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Those opposed? Passes unanimously. All right, we will move to item 4.3.
This is approval with conditions rezoned Z 21060005, rezoned 4.71 acres from B 2 to B 3 for major automotive repair and motor vehicle sales. The applicant is Roger DeJest, and the owners are Greg and Teresa Thompson. Property is located at 2032 Highway 138, this is in District Four. The planning commission did hear from opposition with concerns about how this will affect the neighborhood, wildlife in the area, property values, traffic concerns, and the safety of the children at the daycare. Oh, sorry, hold on, I'm reading the wrong...
You're reading 4.4.
I am, I got ahead of myself here.
We're at the mini storage.
Yes, hold on one second. Okay. Yeah, there was no opposition on this one, but the planning commission did recommend that the automotive repair and automotive sales that be the only use on the property, and that any outside storage...
You're still reading 4.4.
Isn't that where I'm at?
4.3, approval of the...
I am so sorry, y'all. I tried to mark out the one I just did, so I can keep moving forward.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, so let's go back to approval...
Take just a quick break, we have some people leaving, and we'll allow them, and we'll get more organized.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. Okay, let's try 4.3, please.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, this is approval with conditions Z 21060003, rezoned 7.145 acres from A1 to B2 for mini storage units with conditional use for outside storage. The applicant is Louis Crowe, the owner is the estate of Louis Crowe, Sr. The property is located at 4019 Center Hill Church Road, this is in District Three. Now, the other information I was reading applies to this. The applicant wants to do mini storage warehouses with outside storage... We're at the mini storage.
Yes, hold on one second. Okay. Yeah, there was no opposition on this one, but the planning commission did recommend that the automotive repair and automotive sales not be the only use on the property, and that any outside storage...
You're still reading 4.4.
Isn't that where I'm at?
4.3, approval of the...
I am so sorry, y'all. I tried to mark out the one I just did so I can keep moving forward.
That's okay.
Okay, all right, so let's go back to approval...
Take just a quick break. We have some people leaving, and we allow them, and we get more organized.
Okay.
Thank y'all for coming.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, this is approval with conditions Z 21060003, rezoned 7.145 acres from A1 to B2 for mini storage units with conditional use for outside storage. The applicant is Louis Crowe. The owner is the estate of Louis Crowe, Sr. The property is located at 4019 Center Hill Church Road. This is in District 3. Now, the other information I was reading applies to this. The applicant wants to do mini storage warehouses with outside storage for boats and campers. They intend to put up Leland, a fence with Leland Cypress screening along Center Hill Church Road. The planning commission did hear from people with concerns about the traffic, wildlife in the area, property values, and the safety of the children at the daycare and school across the road. The planning commission made a motion to recommend approval with conditions per Public Works comments of a commercial driveway with proper A-cell and D-cell and a center turn lane on the proposed Center Hill Church Road ingress and egress location, and a screening fence and no storage of semi trucks.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing on this as the applicant here, and would like to come forward, please.
Yes, I'm Louis Crowe, and I'm here to apply for zoning for the seven acres to B2 for mini warehouses.
Okay. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Crowe? All right, thank you, Mr. Crowe. Is there anyone here in opposition to these warehouses? Please come forward then.
My name's OJ Soto. I live at 4069 Center Hill Church Road, which is across the road and about 500 feet from the proposed location. So what I would like to go through and just show you what I've put together in opposition of this plan, and if you would, turn to, not the very first page, but the one that talks about the facts, and realize that we have a lot of storage facilities, and 1 in 10 Americans use it, and they're low maintenance, and many of them do not have any employees, and it's a remote calling number system. But the biggest, most important thing from this first page is that storage units are protected by the Fourth Amendment. And so even with safeguards, we can't guarantee what is actually in that storage facility, and what's next to the storage facility is what also is very concerning, which I would like to address at this time. So if you look at the next page, it has an area map, and it's illustrating a lot of the surrounding properties, and it highlights in different colors, and I'd like to go through that with you. In yellow, you have the proposed site, the seven-plus acres. In red, you see the entry and exit to the school. So that right there is just congestion waiting to happen. The orange is the county crossing daycare, and that's the first concern, going back to the Fourth Amendment, with that being a storage facility that we may not know what's in there. And then we have a daycare right next to it. In the black, it's the intersection of Highway 81 and Center Hill Church Road. It's a very congested area, and that area, if you've been there, anytime during the school day in particular, since it started school today, between 3:15 and 4 o'clock, you're backed up from the black all the way past the blue where you see that intersection. The blue is a neighborhood that turns left or right, and then the green is a poorly designated exit area right there where the gas station also causes a lot of problems. There are many, many times, as I drive by there, two, three times a day, there are near accidents on a daily basis. So I wanted to point out, and so you can see the layout of where we are, and reference point just past the blue intersection is my home. The next page, it really highlights and talks about the DOT traffic flow. On the average, 15,000 units cross Center Hill Church and Highway 81 daily, and roughly 5,000 travel just on Center Hill Church Road. So those are some of our big concerns as we add to this property rezone. And then across the street from the rezoning, there are 784 students at youth elementary, 53 staff and support. We have the small pre-K right next to the proposed facility. One of our questions, how will safe, how will safe traffic flow for buses, parents, and others be supported and insured by the developer? Traffic starts in the morning around 6:45 in the morning, and really that area, when we start with youth middle school, and then transitions to youth elementary till about 8:30 to 8:45 in the morning, very congested area, and then we continues with the rush hour traffic trying to get across the county. And then beyond that, it starts again at 3:15, actually 2:30 with youth middle school, and then till about 3:45. And you can see that anytime when you drive through those areas. Also, students crossing the street from youth elementary to youth middle school, so that's another big concern for us, because we have lots of students that do that. My two children did that from 6th grade, 7th, and 8th grade from youth middle school over to our home. So that's a very big concern for us as well. If you look at the next page, in addition to the poor traffic flow, all right, who will look after all these different issues that we've talked about? And then will the school need to hire additional security to prevent from someone accessing the property? Because they're maybe potentially living out of the proposed storage facility. Again, we can't control that. We know there are RVs there, or there could be RVs there, there could be campers there, and we don't know who's actually in there throughout the night. And then the next page, if you look at the access point, all right, why would prevent somebody from being so close to that playground, hopping that fence from the storage facility to the county crossing? They have access point through the storage facility, because right now it's a very, very, very low fence without a lot of security provided for the daycare. And if you look at the daycare along that same property line, they also have the playground. So what is stopping somebody from storage, finding a parking space, renting a parking space from the storage facility, and parking something, for example, a septic truck that could possibly have harmful toxins, whatever it may be, right next to where the kids are at the playground? And we're not separated by more than about 20 feet. So that's another concern that we have. As you can see on the picture here, it's just a regular fence. And then the last thing we'd like to bring out is the poorly designed exit at the Marathon Gas Station always causes a lot of traffic flow throughout the whole day. So along with what the young lady mentioned before that we opposed prior, these are some other facts that are very important to us. I've been in that home that we currently live in since February of 2013, and I'm young enough that I want to be there another 25, 30 years, and I would love for this not to happen. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from the board? Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else here in opposition to this rezoning? Please come forward. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing on this. Oh, rebut, that's correct. I'm sorry. It caught me off guard standing up. Please come back and rebut.
Shaun, there will be a fence required.
Let me say a few words on my real estate agent. He's the mini warehouse, the mini warehouse expert. But I had mini warehouse in Loganville for 18 years, and the traffic is not an issue. Everybody doesn't go to their mini warehouse unit every day. Usually, they put stuff in it, come back in two years and get your stuff out. There's not, you don't go back and forth every day, and you cannot sleep in a camper at the mini warehouse or into the buildings. It's against the law, so you can't do that. And this facility is going to be big enough where it's going to be manned the whole time it's open. It's not going to be call-in or anything. And the, the traffic, if you put in the turn lane, it's probably going to go from the property down to the turn lane that's already at the intersection. So it actually gives the school traffic an extra turn lane to stack up to turn right. And there won't be any mini warehouse traffic at 3 o'clock in the afternoon. There'd be just a few random cars during the day. It's not all the time. But if you've got any questions, Mr. Patterson, a lot more over the mini warehouse.
Thank you. Mike Patterson, I'm with Saul Storage Group. We're a self-storage advisory group out of Carrollton, Georgia, and we specialize in brokerage and planning and analysis of self-storage sites and, and working with developers. So to address a couple of items, there again, Mr. Crowe mentioned that the traffic typically, the amount of traffic in a self-storage facility during a, in one day, and a typical day during the week is probably anywhere from five to 15 vehicles. You just don't see that many. A lot of the traffic, a lot of the customers are going to be moms and dads who bring their kids back and forth to school so it's convenient for them. But as far as the security goes, this facility will have probably an eight-foot fence, I would think, and then some security wire at the top. It'll have lighting that'll run all night, and then, of course, we have security cameras that will be monitored 24/7 for that matter, although there will be some people there during the business hours, and the access to the facility will be limited usually till from about 8:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning until maybe 9:00 at night, and then you won't be able to get in and out of the gate at that point in time without special permission. So we feel pretty confident it's going to be a safe facility. We did a market analysis in a three-mile radius. There's 15,000 people living, and there's a lot more coming. Growth in the area is strong. But we did an analysis, and there is zero climate-controlled storage available within that three-mile radius. And so it's, there is a market for climate-controlled storage. This will be a nice facility with climate control and dry mixed. There'll be some secure parking for campers and RVs and boats, but certainly no trucks. So, any questions?
Any questions? Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Okay, now I'll close the public hearing on this item and ask the board to make a motion.
I make a motion to approve with the conditions set by planning zone.
We have a motion by Commissioner Shellnut to approve.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Warren. Any further discussion? I'll call a vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Passes unanimous. Okay, now we can go to item 4.4.
Okay, this is rezoned Z 21060005, rezoned 4.71 acres from B 2 to B 3 for automotive repair and motor vehicle sales. Applicant is Roger Deajust. The owners Gregory and Teresa Thompson. Property is located at 2032 Highway 138. This is in District 4. The applicant would like to have an auto repair shop and car sales lot. The planning commission verified that the repair and sales would not be for over-the-road trucks. There was no one present to speak in opposition. The motion was made to recommend approval with conditions for automotive repair and automotive sales only, all to be contained within a fence as shown on the site plan.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing on this as the applicant here. Please come forward and... Oh, you got a baby to take care of. The applicant's coming.
I'm Roger Dejus. I requested for rezoning for that property located in 2032 Highway 138 for automotive sales and repair.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of Roger? I'm going to say your first name, because I'm not going to attempt to pronounce your last. Okay, thank you. Is anyone here in opposition to this rezoning? Hearing none? I'll close the public hearing on this and ask the board to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve, as recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission, with the following conditions. The hours of operation Monday through Friday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday, 8:00 to 12:00, at 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. And the second to be no exterior storage after business hours.
I have a motion with conditions of operating hours be set 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., and on Saturdays, 8:00 to 12:00.
Ms. Chairman, are those new conditions, or is that the conditions from...
That'd be additional. That would be...
That'd be additional conditions.
May I ask why?
To cover some additional concerns of the...
As you could.
Sir? I apologize.
Anybody want to ask questions, or you want to... I need a second.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Now we can do discussion, and I'd like to ask the applicant, are you okay with setting certain hours?
Yeah, I wonder why we're setting, because it's going to be, it's going to be on and operating business.
Yes, sir.
I don't know why we could...
I think he's concerned about, you know, working on cars late at night, and noise or something may bother someone or something. I don't...
Just to ensure the quality of life of the residents, the neighborhood that's back behind it and around it.
If we, if we work in silence, there's no noise, nobody disturbed, is that going to be an issue? If we don't make any noise, just working on cars, we're not building cars, we could just change an oil, do some minor, we're on and operating business. It is not a big commercial things. It's a small business. We just try to feed our family.
I understand, but we have a motion with these conditions and a second, and I'm offering the board any discussion they want to make before I call the vote. So, anything else from the board?
I got a question.
All right.
Mr. Bradford, you do, to Mr....
Dejus?
Yes. You're doing automotive sales as well, right?
Yes, sir.
So what is, what is, is the business going to be half and half, sales and half and half? Tell me what you're going to do, I mean, I guess you don't understand.
What I'm doing right now, I have a full-time job. I'm doing this one part-time, so I just want to do it full-time. So I'm looking to get my property so I could own and operate my own business, buying cars, fix them, and sell them back to the community. This is, basically, this is what I'm doing. This is not like a big commercial site. It's going to be like something I own. If I find any, any job, but I usually buy cars from the auction, bring them to my shop and fix them, and we sell them.
So, Mr. Bradford, you asking him to put the cars that are for sale back into a building at nighttime?
That's correct. That's correct. After business hours, there'd be no exterior storage.
But we have car lots all around this county that they don't have to put their cars up when they... I mean, I understand what you're saying about the... I mean, I understand what you're saying about the, about the repair, but I mean, he's selling cars. So how are you going to tell the man selling cars to move them and then put them up and then take them back out every day? If he's selling cars.
As far as if you look, what was recommended by, by planning and zoning, it would actually be bringing back in side the fence, all work and the automotive sales, which he agreed to, would all occur within side the fence. There'd be nothing sitting on the road anyway.
Okay.
Well, Lee, I do, I do think if, if he's going to sell cars, they got, they need to be outside.
I think as far as the...
They ain't got to bring them back in if they sell them.
As far as the sales, the completed cars? I don't have an issue with that.
Piece of junk they working on sitting outside all night, but not a car they trying to sell.
And essentially, the cars he's trying to sell, he had so many spaces that was on the application and it laid out in planning and zoning that those must be contained with inside the fence as well, even for sale. And you agreed that even the for sale, the for sale cars that you had in the planning and zoning meeting, that you would keep those inside the fence for sale. They would not be sitting out on the road.
No, they should, that's, that's in the property. They're, they're not going to stand in the road. That's in the property.
Right, on the property, but it was inside the fence. From reading the minutes from the planning and zoning commission, you agreed at the planning and zoning commission that the cars you offered for sale, that would be complete, would be contained with inside the fence that you have to install anyway. So I'm okay with amending the motion that for sale cars that are completed and ready for sale, that are fixed, can remain inside the fence and for sale on the property? I'm okay with amending the motion to that? Then that word.
Okay, I'm okay with it.
Okay.
So my only thing, so why we got a specific hours of work?
Yes. Okay. Uh, did you get that amended? Part down, read it back for the board, please, Rhonda.
You're saying you're going to amend the motion so that the cars that are for sale stay inside the fence?
Stay inside the fence, that's correct.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
So this fence, is this fence?
Motion and a second.
Another question. This fence we talking about, this is a fence where he, the cars won't be visible from, from the road at all? Or what's, what's this fence about?
I, I guess they want me to fence the property.
The fence is something that's meant, like, the fence, as far as the fenced-in area, would be mandatory for the operation of it anyway because you have different zonings next to it. So being the offset of the zoning, you're going to have to have the fence as part of the guidelines of the code.
So you talking about, can he sell cars at 12:00 on Saturday? Or he has stopped selling cars as well on Saturday? I mean, Saturday seems like a big day to sell cars.
That's a weekend, especially.
Saturday, 8:00 to 12:00, business hours. That being trying to give some of the people around there that are off on the weekends the quality of life when they're out in their yard enjoying their time and stuff or the subdivision that's right behind it that's been there for years, long before this man or anybody else came and enjoyed their property.
I understand automotive repair. We're going to get that, but...
Sure.
Tell them, tell them they can't sell cars until 12 o'clock when that's, Saturday's a big day to sell cars. I mean, that, that seems a little bit harsh to me.
Now, he can sell cars on Saturday.
Not past 12:00.
Well, 8:00 to 12:00, would it make you feel better to make it that he could sell cars to like three or four on Saturday, but no automotive repair? And would you be willing to go by and make sure that there are no repairs going on that day? Because the code department, do they work on Saturdays?
Well, I have a question. Saturday is a day that a lot of sales go on. This is on Highway 138. Are there restrictions on other businesses up and down 138 with the time that they can, uh, sell anything or, or operate?
I'm not sure. As far as, I know there are a couple of places that do sell cars closer to Monroe and there's a huge truck sale area.
I know there's a huge truck place up there.
Which I think we're learning about now. So I'm okay with amending the sales and sales only, you know, up until, say, four o'clock, like 8:00 to 4:00 on Saturday, if that pleases the board.
Because we can set, oh, used car sales on weekends, that's where the business is juicy, on weekends. So if you have a business...
But that would be, that would be the weekend. That would be pretty much all day on Saturday.
Okay. D6 and then Saturday, customer just, customer coming, then I...
I'm trying to get to a point where we can move on, so let's get some sort of motion tied down. And we've changed from 8:00 to 12:00 to 8:00 to 4:00 on your motion.
For sales only.
For sales only.
And repair?
I got one more question, Lee.
Repair, what's that?
8:00 to 12:00.
Hey.
If, if Sharna could interject here.
You know, I think that, um, there was confusion at the planning commission. And, um, if you look at the site plan, it shows, it, it looks like there's a fence. Do you see this?
Yes.
It looks like there's a fence all the way around. And that's, like, have your cars inside of a fence. Is that what you plan to do?
Yeah, I plan to fence my, uh, my property.
Okay. So there, you know, if you look at the site plan, there's a fence around the cars that are for sale, which doesn't need to be an opaque fence, you know, but the fence from the backside of the property to the rear where he may store any cars that he's working on, it would make sense for that to be opaque, but maybe not the front, and they would still be within a fence. That doesn't address your issue of what the timeframe is. But I just want to make sure so that when we and, and Rhonda's are getting this, you know, the decision, that, um, because when the planning commission said a fence around everything, I just want to clarify that only the rear is opaque and the front would be a fence.
That's correct. That would be my understanding. Not on the road.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more questions?
Thank you. No.
All right. We have a motion to, uh, operational hours, 7:00 to 6:00 during the week. Uh, 8:00 to 12:00 repair on Saturday, but can sell till 4:00 if I understand correctly.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
And who's going to police this? I just got a question, but we have a motion. Do you have a second to that?
Somebody wants to amend the second, yes.
Somebody's going to have to amend their second to it.
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to this?
Aye.
And we have Mark Banks, who was the other opposition? Kirkland Dixon, thank you. Okay, we can move on. Point five, point one.
Okay. Okay, this is the amendment to amend the R and D guidelines to change the density to two dwelling units per acre and increase the house size from 1,600 to 2,000 and remove the approval of the, um, the approval process. This was tabled last month and, um, the planning commission did recommend, um, some changes on this, but we are bringing it forward with, uh, the way it was written up with changing the density from three per unit to, three per acre to two and increasing the house size from 1,600 to 2,000.
To clarify for the board, uh, this is where there is sewer out in the county.
Correct.
Uh, to make the density less dense from three per acre to two per acre. And most of the sewers restricted by the cities outside of the county, but there are companies approaching us that put in their own sewer systems for development. And we need the guidelines to hold our density to no more than two per acre. And entertain, someone make a motion to approve this, please.
Motion to approve.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion for Commissioner Banks.
Second.
Second. Second from Commissioner Bradford. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
And that was Kirkland opposing.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Ordinance, third-party inspections.
Okay. So a couple of years ago, there was a House bill that was passed that required all counties to come up with guidelines for third-party engineering practices. This is where if the county is not able to do an inspection within a certain amount of time, that a person can hire a third party. This also allows a third-party engineer, third-party inspector to do the slab inspections, footing inspections. Um, a lot of our builders do use that. It gives them the opportunity to have it inspected right when they need it so they can pour the foundation. Um, a person is allowed to use a third party to do all of their inspections. If they start with the third party besides the footing, then they have to finish with the third party. The county would issue the certificate of occupancy after we have done a final inspection. This is, um, has been drafted by the county attorney. It is our ordinance that we're putting in place to guide that, to regulate that, as well as our, um, plan review program. If y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to...
We require liability insurance on these third parties.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And there is a fee for them applying to be the, to be a third-party engineer in the county or plan reviewer.
Entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Commissioner Shellnut?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Adams, it sounded like. All those, uh, in favor of this, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This one passes unanimous. We have an amended fee schedule for planning and development.
Okay. So we haven't amended our, any of our fees since 2014. And basically, the only thing that we're amending right now are some of our rezone application fees. We're just increasing them by $50. Um, there's a lot of work that goes into processing a rezone, the add, the sign, the, the sign stand. There's a lot of charge for that and those have gone up, the cost of that. So we're looking at increasing all of those. The only thing that we have added to the fee schedule is the, um, the minor subdivision that you guys approved last month as a part of our amendments. Right now, a minor plat is $45. On, on the paper, I, I put on there $90 per lot, but I intended for that to be $45 per lot. So if they're doing over three, it's $45 per lot. We are adding a registration fee for these third-party engineers. We have to go through the process of approving those. And also, we've never in the past been able to register a contractor. Um, with the new software that we're going to be able to get, we'll be able to register. What that means is if a person is doing work in the county, an electrician, a plumber, heating and air, we have a lot of them on commercial jobs. They don't have a business license in Walton County because they live, probably could be out of state or, you know, somewhere else in the, in the state of Georgia. This is to allow them to register with the county so that we have all of their information on hand as far as their state license, their insurance and all that. So that's it. I mean, there's really nothing else that we're changing on our fee schedule. We're not doing anything with the, um, permit fees or anything like that.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the amended fee schedule.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion.
I'll second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, one more, Sharna, item...
One more for me, okay. Uh, proposed road name change, Mount Ena Church to Mount Enon. And, um, Mr. Dixon, did we have somebody that was...
Uh, he's not, I'm going to say goodbye.
Okay, all right. That, I didn't, I, the pastor had thought about coming, but it's, you know, there's only just a few properties that are affected by this name change and we have not had any opposition to getting this name changed. It's the same as the church.
Okay. Uh, entertain a motion to make this name change.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Bradford.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Dixon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is unanimous. Okay, on to the administrative consent agenda and we're taking item six, 12 out and discuss it, um, after the public comment section. Entertain a motion to approve the other items in the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
Got two seconds. Shellnuts, be one. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, resolutions. Milton, you're up. We get to adopt the millage rate.
Gentlemen, uh, Madam, Madam Clerk, um, every year, the state requires the county to, uh, calculate what's called the rollback millage rate, uh, which is the rate necessary for inflation to be mitigated so that there's no tax increase. This first resolution is to formally adopt the, um, rollback rate, uh, decreasing the county millage rate from 10.677 to 10.413, which is the rollback rate. Um, the fire district rate or millage rate would remain the same at 1.335 mils.
Okay. Entertain, accept adopting this resolution? A motion to adopt this resolution?
So moved.
Which one?
Jeremy.
Jeremy Adams. Thank you, Jeremy. Need a second?
Second.
Got a second from Lee Bradford? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And I'll say aye on that one. Thank you. Okay, resolution number two, adopt the Board of Education millage rate.
Okay, the Board of Education is also recommending, uh, adoption of their rollback rate, which is 18.593, from a millage rate of 19.10 a year ago. Uh, their debt service millage would decrease from 2.3 last year to 2.239 for 2021.
And what was that, 19 point what?
19.10 last year.
Okay.
To 18.593.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adopt the Board of Education's 2021 millage rate.
So moved.
Yeah, a motion by Kirkland Dixon, Commissioner Dixon?
Second.
Got a second from Banks and Commissioner Shellnut? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Resolution, item 7.3.
Okay, this is for a, uh, a new extension office building off of Criswell Road, uh, to use SPOSS floor funds for that. I believe there, you should have gotten a project length budget to go with the resolution. Any questions?
No questions. Entertain a motion to adopt this, uh, project-linked budget.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make the motion to approve.
Yeah, motion by Commissioner Warren?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shellnut? Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimous. Resolution, adopting project-linked bu- budget on resurfacing and L-M-I-G striping.
Yes, the, uh, this is another SPOSS four, uh, project, actually, two projects. Um, this resurfacing, I believe you should have got a project-length budget with that listing the roads. Uh, the second part of that is L-Meg striping, um, which SPOSS pays 30% match for, um, the L-Meg funds that we get from the state. So L-Meg 70%, SPOSS 30%.
Okay. Entertain a motion adopting this project-linked budget?
I make a motion to approve.
A motion by Commissioner Shellnut?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Adams. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we have some budget amendments.
There were five budget amendments. The first one is for EMS. Uh, they received a donation of $7,091.37, uh, from the trauma commission and would like to use that money for, um, just small equipment for their department. Uh, the second one, uh, any questions on that? Anybody? Uh, the second one, the, uh, concrete floor has been proposed for the Ag Center, uh... The second one, the concrete floor has been proposed for the Ag Center. That would be done by government buildings and would result in a decrease in fund balance. That's the second one.
Okay. Any questions on that one?
Okay, number three, the planning and zoning engineer has been asked to do additional duties for the department and for the county, and the amendment there is for an additional $6,000 for this, this year to compensate for the additional duties that he would be doing.
Any questions on that one?
Are they gonna be working additional hours to make up?
Could be. He will assist in any condemnations for road right-of-ways and stuff. He'll have to meet property owners after hours to discuss, you know, purchasing the right-of-way or condemning it. We've got several road projects that need to move forward, that we need to acquire additional right-of-ways and stuff. So, it will entail additional hours work. Is that all of them, or we still got some more?
There's one more, actually. Sorry, two more, but they go together. The EMS department needs to purchase two ambulances. These ambulances are becoming harder to, to get, and Ronnie, what is it, next year, I think, before we could get these, even ordering them right now? If we wait longer, I understand it's gonna go two years. The fourth amendment would be for the chassis, the two chassis, which are Dodge ambulance chassis. And the fifth budget amendment would be for the box units that go on the chassis. Correct?
That's correct. We, we okayed an ambulance two months ago, and Ronnie came to me, and he's not getting it till January at the earliest. And we have two more that the mileage is appro, will be approaching 250,000 miles, and we don't want an ambulance breaking down, making a call. So, we need to get these in the pipeline so that we can keep the fleet up to date. Entertain a motion to accept these budget amendments?
Motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimous. Thank you. Next on the item we have for discussion, Davenport and Company LLC is a financial advising company that the county has had on their payroll through retainer, and we pay them 20 grand a year, whether they offer any financial advice or not. And then, they also generate income. If we should bond anything, they get a percent when we go through our own bond council and bonding agent that provide us any documentation. And it's my recommendation after consulting with Milton that we don't need to be paying two people to do the same thing. So, I would like a motion to exercise our 30-day clause to cancel our contract with Davenport and Company.
So moved.
I'll second.
Make a motion that we approve.
All right, we have, we have a motion and a second. All those, any other, we'll put Mark Banks's motion and Jeremy or Kirkland as a second. I think I heard both y'all, didn't I?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. And any other discussion on this? All right, I'll call, I'll vote on the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It passes unanimous. Okay, now we come to public comment. And as I stated prior to the meeting started, we have 13, and with three minutes allowed per person, I want to waive that three minutes so we can thoroughly hear everyone here. I would ask that you not repeat the same objection to what you perceive as being talked about and discussed. I also want to voice my, I guess you would call it disappointment. In this group attacking a private citizen and a private business, this citizen has donated Meridian Park, Loganville. He's donated 55 acres in Walnut Grove for a sports complex. He just donated 128 acres to the city of Monroe for nature trails along the Alcovee River. And the gall of this group to slander him and his company is worse than being pond scum. I am sorry, that is lower than lower. This guy was fixing to start a humane society for Walton County with his own money, and y'all attack him on the internet because he entered into a contract with this county for a piece of property was the most dismal thing, and I'm ashamed of every one of you. And I just want you to know that. So, we will start with a public comment. First on the list is Daniel Corbin. So, come forth and make your comments.
My name's Daniel Corbin. I live at 934 East Church Street. I did have a little speech to present, but I'm just coming here speaking from the heart. I've been at 934 East Church Street for about two years now. My daughter and son-in-law live now across the street where the proposed safety complex is going to be, in safety, traffic, and property values. I moved from Gwinnett County to the, the fine city of Monroe just to have this hit me. And I just asked the commissioners not to move forward with this. I mean, it's just gonna destroy my way of life. I retired from Gwinnett County and moved out here, and for a jail to go in my front yard, my daughter and son-in-law's backyard, is just unbelievable.
You're aware that we have decided not to do it on that site?
Okay. Well, that was part of my original speech. I don't know what the new stuff's going on, so.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Okay, Austin Barnes, please. Is Austin Barnes present? 148 Sixth Street? Okay. Melinda Quinn, please. 1707 Dogwood Trail.
I'm Melinda Quinn, and I don't want a jail built in any neighborhood in Walton County. I know that there's some discussion about moving it, but I don't want it in any way.
Please refrain. We understand, and we'll ask for a show of hands, but we are gonna keep order, please.
I don't live in the city limits of Monroe. I live in the county, but I've lived in Monroe. I've lived in social circle, and now I live in the county. My husband and I moved to Walton County in 1972. So, for 49 years, this has been our home. We've made friends with many of you sitting in front of me. We volunteered. We've been very involved in the county, and we love Walton County. We've raised our children here. We've made lasting friendships. But I stand before you, Mr. Chairman, to respectfully say, you have not done your homework. You have not followed the logical process for building a jail. You can just easily Google it and see what is the process to get community buy-in, to get people behind you, so that you don't feel the animosity, so that you have people working with you. Your site study is eight years old. I know that there was a new one done, but the one that started this discussion was eight years old. The jail feasibility study is ti, is six years old. When these were done, the 2010 census had just been released, and now we're waiting on the 2020 census. So, the changes are profound. Changes in the neighborhood, changes in the city, changes in the county, and changes in the jail population. Changes in the need have been profound since those studies were done. The planning doesn't even indicate, though, a response to that 2015 study. There was a case made in it for best practices in the criminal justice system, which would reduce the criminal population. Now, please, I'm not a jail expert. I, I, I don't, I don't know about jail safety or any of that, but I do know that recommendations were made. I don't know if those recommendations were followed. But if those recommendations were followed, then by the year 2035, the jail would need to house 486. If they're not followed, then the jail would need to house 648 by 2035. Those were the projections in the study that I've seen. So, I don't know why you're planning on such a large facility, even for future growth, because we're talking about by 2035, you won't even have 1,000. And I think you're talking about a jail for 2,000. Above all else, though, this has been done in secrecy, and that is the death to anything. If you, if you plan in secret, you don't have citizen involvement, you don't have citizen community groups, you don't do citizen education. I know there's a need for a new jail. I have family members working in the jail. I want a safer jail. But many people in this audience, many people in the community say, we don't even need a new jail. So, the education has not been done to say, we need a new jail. This is what we need. Where could we put it? What would you all like to see and get that citizen buy-in? We need a citizens group. We need transparency, and we need to know, why is a neighborhood the only option? And the people out here, Mr. Chairman, do feel disenfranchised. And I personally did not make an attack on Darryl McWaters. He grew up in my church. I did not. So, please don't paint with such a broad brush, a group of citizens that just want to be heard. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Jason Sams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Walton County Commission. My name is Jason Sams. I've spoken with all of you at some point since early in July, and I'll say that by and large, you are a group of intelligent and reasonable men. I also want to say that while I commend you for moving the project off Church Street and placing it around the corner on Baker, I don't feel like that that's something that many people that are a part of this opposition are going to be happy with. I ask that on behalf of the citizens of Monroe, that you take notice of the resolution that I'm holding in my hand that was put forth by our council on our behalf. Based on what I've seen since that meeting, I don't know that anyone has read it on the commission. If you have read it, then I could only draw the conclusion that you still have little to no interest in public opinion, nor the city's right to self-determination. I make these statements because the resolution is very clear. We expect that a project will not commence in a residential area that will house inmates. We express our desire that we would like this project to be placed in an industrial area, which many are available. In addition to these requests and these recommendations, we outline that the property on Church Street shouldn't be purchased by the county for any intended purpose of a government building, because we fear that eminent domain will always be in play if the county gets hold of that property. We actually suggest that the developer you mentioned develop a residential community that would benefit the area and not take away from it. But yet, with this resolution and our resolve to oppose the moves that you chose to make, we are here. We are here where, just until moments before this meeting, you intended to vote on item 6.12 that was on the agenda, which is to grant precision planning, a company that is a great company, I'm sure, but I wonder how they can be experts at reservoirs in jails all at the same time. But you were going to make a motion to grant them $15,000 to develop a site plan for a property that you haven't discussed with any members of the community, and push public comment until after you had approved that motion. When this all began, I hope I would never need to remind anybody on the commission that you are in fact servants of the public, and you were beholden to them to at least listen to their desires. I ask that you take notice of the number of people that are here in this chamber tonight. And I also will ask you to mindfully consider the number of people that signed a petition that I put together, and drive through the communities and see the 300-plus signs and banners that have been placed. You should understand that your unwillingness to work towards a resolution with the community, or even bring members of the community to the table for discussion, is in fact being noticed. Citizens across the county are watching what happens here. They are watching the commission cast aside a majority of a people and their elected city officials for what in all accounts at this point appears to be the need of a few individuals to decide what's best. Commissioners, rest assured that the 1,823 people who signed the petition have a voice. Know that these people are not located in any one particular district of this county, but know that there are many of those people located in every district of this county. Without a shift in your direction on this matter, this will not be something that goes away. This will not be something that you will be able to distance yourself from. Just think about what would happen if you continued to move forward and then had the notion that you would ask the citizens of this county to vote to pass a GO bond to fund this project. In closing, I'd like to thank you for your time and your open lines of communication with me. Although that those conversations could be adversarial, I don't think that they ever were, at least not from my end. And I'd like to share a quote with you in the room and the good people from one of my favorite persons, Ross Perot. "One voice is tiny. Alone, it cannot be heard above the din of politics as usual. The people's voice, however, when it cries as one, is a great and powerful roar." Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. All right, Clayton Mathis. Is Clayton Mathis here? Kobe Hanson?
My name's Kobe Hanson. I live at 1,001 East Church Street. I know, David, you had called me when this first started. I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate y'all hearing us and taking it away from that spot. I know there's a lot of people like Jason and Melanie who spoke before me who, I'm gonna repeat a lot of it. So, I do want y'all to know I am opposed to it. I do would like more public comment, and just hearing us out, and I thank y'all for allowing us that. And yeah, I'm gonna let them speak, and thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Sam Davis?
Good evening, Commissioner. My name's Sam Davis. I live at 507 East Church Street. I'm in District Six. And I would also like to speak in opposition to any proposed location that would be near schools, churches, neighborhoods. If, we've done some research, and in many greater Atlanta counties, they place facilities, jail facilities, in industrial areas, your high commercial areas. And I would urge this commission to consider those things. Also, I've done a lot of research, and many studies have shown the negative impact that this has in housing market and local economies. It increases homelessness, especially when you put it near downtown areas. And having it in close proximity to the historic district uh... And having it in close proximity to the historic district and our historic Monroe City, I think would have a tremendous adverse effect, not just on our city, but the county. We all know that Monroe is the economic engine that drives this county. And many people come to this county. I came to this county for downtown Monroe. I moved to downtown Monroe because of Coffee Camper Company and Scoops, okay? I've got four kids. I'm serious, okay? I grew up on a farm. I raised poultry and cattle, okay? I live on a half-acre lot, and half my yard is paved. But anyways, it's great for cutting grass, though. So this has a, there's just so many adverse effects. And I just want to urge you guys, I feel like, the way I found out about this, by the way, is a friend of mine lives in downtown Athens and was considering to move to downtown Monroe. And I got the text and said, "Ma'am, I'm not coming now, and you should sell your house now." And that's the way I found about it. And so I would just urge you guys, do your homework. There's tons, a feasibility study, a current one, would, I think, would be beneficial to you guys in your decision-making. Also, I was just doing some research. I found out there was a commission that just voted. I don't know how old, I've heard the number, $100 million for a jail. I'm not opposed to a new jail, if the county needs it. And I'm, you know, pro-law enforcement and jail and whatever we need to do to be safe. But I know one commission, I just know, they released this past year, that they were looking about $100 million facility. And just the construction cost alone, they knew they couldn't meet budget. They were looking at going from 100 to 125, 150 million dollars. And so these things, I don't know how old that $100 million number is, but for us to just consider these things and the feasibility. Also, for you guys to consider, I don't know if you, there are jail consulting firms all across the country that you can hire that can help with these things. And let's see. Yeah. The last thing I would just request, as those who have gone before me, is consider some form of community involvement or relations, whether it's via Facebook, that you guys can communicate what's going on, or if you want to form a team. I was in Congressman Heiss's office a couple of years ago, in DC, and I was spending time with him and some of the other congressmen up there. And one of the things that they were sharing with me is they said, you never, they were encouraging me to share with people the value of contacting your elected officials. And one of the things that they said is that in Congress, they said if the Congress office gets three to five phone calls, that that is enough power to sway their vote. Because they said three to five phone calls represents thousands of people. And I would just like for you guys to consider, how many phone calls and emails have you received in regards to this? And it isn't just downtown Monroe. This is people in the county that are concerned about this. Because it's not just location, it's budget, it's money, real money that we're concerned, that we're going to be strapped with. And there's just a lot of things at play. And I would urge you guys to consider these things. And then finally, also, I would just like to say, I am here, speaking in opposition, but I have nothing negative to say about the man that you guys entered into contract with. I don't know him personally, but I've heard nothing but good about him. That's called ad hominem. And I don't engage in such foolishness.
I appreciate that.
Separate myself from that.
Thank you very much. Chris Hall.
Alrighty. Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Chris Hall. I live in District 4. And I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to voice my opposition, obviously, to building a new jail in a residential area. Honestly, I never thought that I would have to voice opposition to something like this, because I figured it was something that everyone could agree on across the board. But here we are. Jails do not belong in neighborhoods. It was nice to see the July 30th county press release about East Church Street no longer being a contender. I know, Mr. Chairman, you're quoted in that release as saying, "I've made the decision to move the public safety complex away from Church Street." It's wonderful. It went on to say that yourself and the mayor would be considering other locations. And that press release would lead residents to believe that other areas would be carefully considered. You know, we all thought that was a win. All right, we're going to move forward with something different. But I guess that wasn't the case, because the July 28th amended contract with Precision Planning showed that the Baker Street, what we know as the Baker Street property, was already being, a new site plan was being requested for that. So that was kind of disappointing. And I say that to go into, I know there's rezoning litigation between Monroe Walton Properties LLC, which are related to the current owners of the Baker Street property. And they're in litigation with the city of Monroe about the, some rezoning stuff from years past. So if the litigation goes in favor of the Bakers, I know their plan was to build low-income housing development directly across the street from this new site. It's kind of defeating the purpose from moving it from Church Street if we want to build stuff and develop and improve our residential area. The driveways would literally be across from one another. My point, like most other folks here, is why can't we find a location that is an industrial area and already owned by the county? If the sheriff doesn't care where it goes, why not take the time, do our due diligence, and find a suitable location? I know, from what I've seen, at least the county doesn't have that money to build it anyway. The Biden books, as I call them, that the county is lobbying for through that engagement letter with Hall and Knight, you know, that's not guaranteed. You know, we hope that we get them, because there's other projects that the county needs and wants to pay for. What happens if we don't get them? Where is the funding going to come from? I know the lost funds are not going to go as far as we need them to for this big, new, proposed jail. And moving forward, I hope this board just decides to govern by the campaign phrases that a lot of y'all ran on, smart growth, fiscally conservative, protecting our families and quality of life, which are your families as well, and protecting the taxpayers. I'm sure none of y'all thought that you would receive the community pushback that you have, and that it would be something that would just zip-zip right, you know, right through the commission. This isn't an adversarial opposition. It's common sense opposition. You are all elected to serve us, the people of this county, and serve with our best interests at the forefront. This is we, the people, doing our part now to hold all of you accountable. I hope you all cut your senses and take the time to find a suitable location at a reasonable price. The taxpayers won't forget. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Laura Gross.
Mr. Chairman, as Laura comes up, did we skip over Clayton Mathis?
He was not present. I called his name.
Is Clayton here in the room? You're waving off? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Warren.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's time to take a giant step back and reevaluate this project. Please do not purchase any property around the Walton County courthouse. Please do not purchase any property around the Walton County courthouse. All of this land is surrounded on all sides by neighborhoods. I've heard it said that the county is going to buy this property off East Church Street, no matter what. If the county buys the East Church Street property, and you promise us you won't build housing for prisoners there, the commissioners elected after you will be able to use it however they please. And if this is fiscally conservative to purchase this land, as some of you have stated, nothing else about this project is fiscally conservative. Fiscally conservative politicians don't hire lobbyists in Washington, DC. They don't hire site planners for land they don't own. They don't plan to destroy homes, and they don't ignite an economic downturn in the city that is the county seat. Fiscally conservative commissioners don't saddle the citizens of Walton County with $100 million tax burden to pay for a jail that will be far too large. We are unable, right now, to properly staff the jail we have. We are not using the 60-bed detention center because of staffing problems. Instead, please consider remodeling the current facility. Consult jail and incarceration experts to plan this project so that design mistakes will not be made and money might actually be saved. Initiate a citizens panel to help sort through the special concerns of this project. I have lived in my house on Church Street with my husband Joey and our children and our grandchildren for 34 years. It seems unfortunate that our county commissioners would vote to purchase land for a jail that would result in our home being destroyed and not even think it was important enough to call and discuss it. I ask myself, what is driving this? What is driving this idea that the jail must be beside the courthouse? What is driving the idea that this jail must be so large when the population of Walton County doesn't come close to supporting it? What is driving the idea that we need a giant safety complex? Is convenience driving this? I don't see how that could be true. This county is not that large, and there is very little traffic in comparison with a lot of other counties. Most things are taken care of online, anyway. Please stop trying to cram this down our throats by moving the site a few hundred feet over from East Church Street to the other side of the courthouse and acting like that is going to solve this problem. No jail in any neighborhood. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rita Dickinson.
Chairman Thompson and commissioners, I'm Rita Dickinson. I'm a resident of Church Street. I am director of Monroe Country Day School that is located at 602 East Church Street. And I'm here in opposition to a jail being placed on Church Street or 1,000 feet away that ends up, Lander Street backs up to one of the locations I've been shown, and I will refer to it as the Baker property. I'm in favor of the jail being rebuilt in an industrial area such as Cherry Hill. Our city council has also presented a resolution that opposes any residential neighborhood. The land surrounding Church Street or Baker Street is zoned R1. The land at Cherry Hill is already zoned industrial. I specifically want to talk about the fiscal irresponsibility of our county commission. The Walton Tribune wrote on July 27th, 2020, "David Thompson Incoming Chairman Rips Tax Rate Budget. Thompson Says County Should Have Taken Rollback Rate." The next chairman of the Walton County Board of Commissioners made clear he doesn't like the way the current commissioners are spending public dollars. Move forward one year. The tagline could read, "The public is making it clear. We don't like the way Chairman Thompson is spending our dollars." Why are you in such a hurry? You do not have the $100 million that you need to build the jail. Starting with only a fifth of the $128 million that has been estimated to complete this jail does not give our county confidence in your ability to lead and manage. Where are you going to get this money? Jails are not in the infrastructure package. Call in a jail addition. A mental health facility does not make it eligible for these funds. The county is going to be forced to pass this burden onto the backs of the taxpayers. A general bond is still on the burden of the taxpayers. A jail is not eligible for a revenue bond. On one hand, we are told the courthouse site will save us $20,000 a year in transportation costs, but you drop $17,500 monthly to Rich Gold, a lobbyist lawyer in Washington, DC. No offense to lawyers. The chairman has said the county is buying the land that Reliant owns because it is such a good deal. This is false economy. It seems like a good deal, but it's a waste of taxpayers' money. Is the county in the business of speculation? We, as citizens, expect better of our commissioners. Your secrecy and avoidance of the hard questions make it appear you have something to hide. So every time we find a contract with a lobbyist or with a contractor, the public thinks you're doing something underhanded. This is what I'm asking. Slow down. Be truthful. Get citizen input. Choose an industrial location, and we will support the new safer jail.
Thank you. Gareth Finley, please. And even though I was criticized for moving this to the end of our meeting, I think it's working a whole lot better where everyone gets heard and we don't cut you off with three minutes. It's special. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Gareth Finley, and I live near Old Cowpens in the Brush Creek subdivision. And I want to thank you, sir, Honorable Chairman, for changing, and Commissioner Dixon for suggesting that the agenda be changed, and you for, and the rest of the commissioners for approving this decision to hear us out before actually voting on the feasibility planning study for the Baker site. And I want to thank you for asking us to refrain from personal attacks, because I feel the same way. I think we should appeal to values and principles. I'm a newcomer. Moved here in 2018. My parents are newcomers. They moved here a decade before that because of the appeal of Walton County, because it's a wonderful place to be with all of its quality of life that so many have talked about here tonight. I'm a Democrat. I'm a very, very liberal Democrat. Not only did I vote for Barack Obama, I am a community organizer. When I moved to town, one of the first things I did was sign up to campaign for Stacey Abrams. Now, that's no secret, because I've still got that bumper sticker on my car. And since I was campaigning for Stacey Abrams, one of the first things I did was go around and knock on hundreds of doors across Walton County. Hundreds of doors of people who are likely Democratic voters. And I talked to hundreds of people. And I've continued to do that, because it's a thing I do. I just love it, talking to the people. I would like to speak on what we all have in common. We cherish our quality of life. The places where we choose to live and how we invest our time and money as families and communities speak about who we are and what we believe is the quality of life. Where we invest speaks about our values and aspirations and thoughts about our families and communities. So for me, expanding incarceration is not believing in the people who are part of our community. It reflects a belief that the world is full of bad people and that our neighbors are our enemies. And that the neighborhoods where I went door-knocking were dangerous and strange, because Walton County is very segregated. And most of the people I spoke with were African-American, just like most of the people in the jail. That's not just an opinion, it's a fact. Investing our money in schools and services sends a different message than investing in incarceration. It says, "We believe in the potential of our people, our neighbors, that we're all in this together." And I really believe that. I believe that even though, as a Christian, I have no church home in Walton County, because there is no church in Walton County that will affirm my marriage to a woman. I believe we're all in this together. Even though, not too long after I moved to Walton County and started speaking out, I noticed that someone had come into my backyard and broken limbs on a tree. broken limbs on a tree, very carefully selected limbs and left them to die and turn brown so that I would know someone doesn't welcome me here. And there's a variety of reasons why that might have happened, but I've been speaking out because no church will have me. I report direct to God.
I understand that, but let's talk about the facility and the...
I'm talking about our belief in our communities. Understand, sir, that investing money in expanded incarceration to import inmates and make a profit or bring in revenue off incarceration is not the community that we believe in here. And it's not the community that the people who aren't here would believe in. There are many, many, many people who are not here. And there's an entire population of people who are not here. I wanted to say, getting money from the Biden administration for this project is not going to happen. I campaigned for Reverend Warnock as well as for Joe Biden and John Ossoff and the other Democrats. The money that has been awarded through the American Rescue Plan and the other monies that are coming down from Congress, whether you agree with it or not, maybe you think they're just printing too many dollars of debt, but that money is not for expanding incarceration. It's for community services. It's for schools. It's for rental relief. It's for helping the people who've been pushed down and who aren't here tonight. It's for rehabilitating, reentering citizens who've gotten caught up in the incarceration system. The money from Washington, the Biden bucks, they're not going to fund this project. They're just not. So I ask that you consider what we all have in common, that we love our quality of life, that we're ferociously independent, that we all have our own ways of enjoying this community, and that expanding incarceration in Walton County is not a winning strategy for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, like the other gentleman, had a lot of notes to stand up here and go by, but I think I'm going to speak from the heart as well. Thank you for seeing us. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. I know that you get a lot further with people with sugar than you do with vinegar. And I just want to say that I had nothing to do or say about the gentleman online either. And it hurts really bad to hear someone of your stature to call us pond scum because not all of us do that kind of thing. And I would like to say that I did call each one of the county commissioners and I sent emails. And I sent an email to the sheriff's department or to the sheriff. And I sent it to the city council. And the only person that responded to me, other than a city councilman, was Lee Bradford. And I just want to thank him for taking the time to call me back. And we had a very nice conversation and we definitely disagree on, you know, certain things. He said that the jail was much more than just the construction and location, that it's about being able to provide the prisoners that are there for mental illness and drugs and the different reasons that they are put into the, to be incarcerated. But that really doesn't affect, you know, the reasons that we're in such opposition of the new location. If you only knew, it took four contracts on my house in Florida for me to be able to come up here. And I've waited for like seven years to get my husband to... Drew, can you give me some water? I apologize. Anyway, my husband and I are both from Georgia. I grew up here and we moved, like I said, we started trying to transition back to Georgia to be closer to family. And I had four contracts or three contracts fall through on our house in Florida and had two contracts on the neighborhood that we live in right now on Stone Creek Bend because, whatever, I don't know. It was just a really difficult situation. But I've been looking at Monroe for seven years. And it was, I just wanted to come back to a quaint little town where I felt safe. And I don't know what it was about Monroe, but it was the people. It was the downtown area, the church street, the historical section. And, you know, we don't, my husband and I have been married for forty-one years. We've worked really hard for what we have. And we don't have three or four hundred thousand dollars to go buy into most of the neighborhoods that are going up now. So when we found Stone Creek, this was like, like the property that we ended up with, where our house situates, is on the conservation. You own that land, I guess, or the city, somebody does. And I guess at some point in time, you could all come in and decide that you want to do something different with it. But that's my little piece of paradise. We moved there because, I mean, I can't even tell you, I thank God every day for my house. You know, the houses, the new houses that are being sold off in this neighborhood are going for fifty thousand dollars more than what we paid for our house. So we have been sitting here thinking, oh, my gosh, this is so awesome. Thank you, Jesus, because the house that we sold in Florida, we suck at real estate. That's all I can say. So anyway, getting here and finding this place that I can't even tell you how much I love being able to go downtown and walk in the antique stores. I know this doesn't mean anything to you, but I don't want a jail in our neighborhoods. It doesn't have a place to be near schools. It doesn't have a place to be near churches. I feel like you're putting the welfare of a prisoner over the citizens that pay the revenue to build anything in this town. So I just beg you, please reconsider. I don't know where you all live. I don't know if you're in the city or in the county or if you live in Loganville or wherever, but I didn't even get to meet our commissioner. He's, I'm in six, I guess, right? Your commissioner? I just, I just want to thank y'all for doing what you can to make this the best place because this is where I'm retiring. Can you imagine somebody saying, oh, I'm going to retire in Monroe, Georgia? But that's where I wanted to retire because of just, you know, we can build this place up. I don't mind. I'll serve on a committee. I'll do anything I can to help make this place the best place it can be. But you've got a big problem when you start talking about social justice and like how to rehabilitate people. You know what? Take these people that are in jail. Take them into a country setting or something. Make them work. Give them, pay them a little bit. Mr. Bradford, I think I stole that from you. But anyway, you know, they need to be somewhere where they can be rehabilitated. When that person is released from jail, I don't want him walking off Hammond Street or Church Street or Baker Street or Lander Street or any of those streets around there. This jail needs to be somewhere else. I want to retire and have like just the most wonderful time in my neighborhood. And thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you.
Pond scum, okay? Stop. I'm a pond scum.
Well, I'll stand by my statement on that. What was done to a private citizen in his business was uncalled for. Was, I know it wasn't everybody, but those involved know who you are and you know how I feel about it. Now, let's get to our last one. Debbie Beauchard. And then we still have one item on the agenda that we have to discuss and vote on after
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I do have to say I'm extremely disappointed. I'm disappointed in each one of you, just as you said that you were of us. It is so unfair to call us out when we have not been given our rights. I oppose the jail being in any neighborhood. There is no reason to put it in an area where we can get revenue from homes. Having it in the back of my neighborhood, basically is where it is. I'm in Stone Creek as well. And it would back up any of that property back there. The new neighborhood that's going in hasn't even, houses haven't even been built. And I think it's Meadows Farms, I think from what I've seen. Those homes, if the jail is put there, those homes will not sell or the value of those will be down right away as soon as, as soon as word gets out that the jail is going to be placed there. The value of that property will go down and so will ours. That is my retirement. That is where I want to be. But when I chose Monroe, I lived in Gwinnett and I lived in Oconee. If somebody would have told me ten, fifteen, twenty years ago that I would live in Walton County in Monroe, I would have laughed at them. Just as, not me, that's a backcountry place. I would not be there. I chose the city of Monroe because the people of Monroe took the time to rebuild, to make the place something. And when I tell somebody I'm moving to Monroe or I'm living in Monroe, and they say, wow, that place has changed. Isn't that a wonderful perception? That place has changed. It's really coming, becoming a place to go, a place to be. And that's what I wanted to hear. That's where I wanted to be. And yet I do take offense to picking out everybody. I understand there might be a couple, but I do feel that we all need an apology. Thank you very much.
Thank all of y'all for your comments and concerns. This property was entered into a contract and that had to be in closed-door session while we were negotiating price. This board immediately come forward and announced when we entered into a contract. I was in the process of working on an infrastructure package. I started in May when Congress was still discussing that. As part of this will be the water treatment plant at Hard Labor Creek. It'll be additional road projects. Yes, we considered this project because this project was voted on by the voters some eight years ago, approved to build a new facility. This county collected twenty-five point two million dollars that's still sitting in an account. The jail could have been built then for thirty-eight to forty-one million. And politics got in the way. It was going to Cherry Hill. They were going to give up the transportation issue. And it got thrown in a closet. We've done, they did, the feasibility studies to death. There were four different feasibility studies done at different times. There's nothing changed to lessen the need. They've gone to the ankle monitors. They've gone to the drug court to lessen the case. Today, there's two hundred and fifty-six, I mean, five hundred and twenty-six prisoners in a three hundred and seventy-six jail facility. The need is critical that we do something. The judiciary wants it close to the courthouse. I did not pick Hammond Drive to put that courthouse there. And it's there now. And that's where all the courts go. So we're going to consider every option that we can. If the sheriff is okay with the transportation issue, they have been several accidents transporting. Everyone ends up in lawsuits. We're going to finish our meeting and then I'd be glad to talk to any of you after the meeting. But I just wanted to make those statements. It's a hard problem. We were going to hold public hearings. We were not to that point. We had to rush to get a site plan so I could make a presentation on the infrastructure. And we need to get a site plan on any location that we look at. We need to know how it would lay out. That's a conceptual site plan. It in no way commits us to that particular site I've built and developed my whole life. You can't just pick a site and say you're going to do it there. You have to do your homework and your layout. And we have this issue, this item twelve, number one, that we need to discuss. It was allowing precision planning to do a site design on the property known as the Baker property out at the Hammond Drive courthouse location. That property is in the conservancy. It is not residential. It can't be zone residential. It can never be built on except for a government entity building. So it is very attractive for this location. I'm going to push for it to go on this location if, with the board's approval. We have an urgent need to take care of this problem. You can't keep running from it and it go away. Someone's going to get hurt critically down there in this facility we got. We can't add on to it because of hydrology. We're not building two thousand beds. It'll have the potential to go to that, which another commissioner will have to worry about this thirty-five, forty years from now. They can add a pod to it. These facilities are secure. They are, look more like an industrial building, manufacturing building than it does a jail. So I'm committed to taking care of this problem. I ran to take care of some hard problems. Everybody's so smart. This county is sitting there, it's in all the reports for the last twenty years, sixteen years, there's money sitting in accounts that are dormant, not brought forward. Any of you could have picked up on it. It's in the annual reports, but no, I did. I'm looking at this. I'm looking after the welfare of the county. I don't like attacking private citizens. You can attack me all you want to, but to attack a private citizen that has done so much for this community, I'm not apologizing for what I said. Those of you did it, you deserve the comment. Those that you didn't, I apologize to. I'm a fighter as well as you guys, but when there's a need there, we've got to take care of this need for the county. And if transportation is not an issue, then you got the DA's got to drive to where the jail is, then the public defenders. It works when it's all together in one complex. Oh, I thought I just heard you say, don't bond, don't raise taxes. You can't have it both ways. Anyway, anyway, we're going back to the business at hand and that's this approval of getting a site plan on the Baker property to see how that will work out. All the other work has, it's a reproduction of a same layout on a different location. And I'll make the motion that we proceed with this and go ahead and see how this site lays out.
Second.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
We got two seconds. We got a motion and a second. Any other discussion from the board?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
What are your thoughts about what the citizens said tonight about some more input into various sites? What do you think about that?
Please repeat that.
I said, what's your input about the citizens' desire to have more input? How do we respond to that?
We got a site plan. We get a site plan and then we'll, we'll, we'll call public hearing and then we'll bring back the old sites and look and get the sheriff at the meeting. But this, this thing needs to be done somewhere. We're talking about a 830-bed facility. We're at 526 today and we have, I don't forget how many, he said it was in Oglethorpe County. I can't help the court systems. I don't have anything to do with the court systems and how fast I process people. And the drug situation is bad. I was going to assist, ask for assistance on the infrastructure money to the fentanyl, the crystal meth, the cocaine is still rampant in our communities. We need to try to rehabilitate and help those people instead of punishing those people. And starts off, I think we had a citizen tell me that he spent two years in prison and it changed his life and helped him get off of the crystal meth, if that's not correct, if you told me that. So we are listening and we will hold public hearings when we have something to present.
Chairman, can I ask a question? So we're, we're basically just going to, we're voting on a site plan to consider...
We're going to see how that's...
Not committing us anything.
The site is so big, I want to see the public safety complex and see what additional buildings that it can meet since the courthouse is there to support the county government. We need to plan for the future for not only moving offices out of the courthouse to expand the courtrooms, we also need to plan for the expansion of different departments as this county grows.
I would like to ask that we, I think that's, I don't have a problem with that, but I would like to ask that we also consider calling a work session with all the commissioners and the sheriff present so that we can get a, and I don't want to waste time.
I mean, that's fine. We can call anytime a quorum of us gets together, we have to give a seven days notice and all that, and I'm fine with that.
Yes.
And, but this is an issue that needs tackling. It's been procrastinated about for eight years, I know. There's 25 million sitting there that we can't utilize.
I agree. I just think that, I have a problem before the site plan, but I would also like for us to just to have a meeting to just kind of look at everything.
That's fine.
Information from him that would help.
I have, I have no problem with that.
I concur.
I would like to know exactly, you know, how it lays out before any meeting is called.
So are we asking, just to make sure I'm clear, to spend $15,000?
It's $14,000.
$14,800 plus an additional $200 to determine if this could potentially work if it were to come together? Is it possible that maybe we can meet and all come together and get a little more input and figure out if this is the right site before we decide to move forward and spend any more of the community's money?
The... The question is, is the transportation issue a big enough issue? Then you could look at alternative sites if it was not. If it's that big an issue, then we have to address that. But we need to go ahead and look at this site and see how it lays out.
But Mr. Chairman, there's other issues besides the transportation. There's also the old jail, there's the cost of the new jail, there's the church street property purchase, there's real inmate bed needs, there's the sheriff's office staffing, a lot of things brought tonight that we need to talk about besides just the transportation. So I would like to see us do a meeting to discuss all these issues as well as transportation.
That'll be fine. Okay, I'm going to call the question on the motion at hand. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
We got two.
Honey, who's opposing?
Show of hands, please, who's opposing? We have two. Motion carries. And with that, that concludes our meeting. I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
Some of...
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank y'all for coming. That's quite all right.